February 30th, 2007, to order, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Council, agency member Barnwell, Falcone, Horton, House, Schneider, Williams, Mayor, Chair Bloom.
Here. It's going to be a short meeting.
Any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment, I've got a couple. Jennifer Rose.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Hi.
Council members, how are you doing today?
Good.
I am here to invite you to the Downtown Organization's new cultural evening. It's called First Thursday, and I've got some passports here for you.
Oh, great.
Clerk might help me. There's seven there.
Okay, thanks.
Just want to tell you a little bit about First Thursday. It's a downtown cultural evening, the first Thursday of every month, and it's free to the public, to everyone. So we invite you to join us. Every month, we're putting out this passport, and inside of it is a map of all of the different galleries, theaters, outdoor activities that are going on. There's everything from art openings to art demonstrations, theater projects, live concerts, wine tastings, all kinds of different things. This particular First Thursday for February the first, we are partnering with the Film Festival, and there are a couple of different free activities for tourists and locals alike to enjoy film festival activities. And we will have it every First Thursday, different program each time. This particular one has the programming for February, but you can go to santabarbordowntown.com/go and download the different maps and programs for every month. So if you can't join us this month, then hopefully you can join us next month. And just look for these particular signs in the different windows in the downtown area, and you can check out their different programming. And we're looking forward to, in the future, working with some different groups to provide different interactive things for kids, some kind of care programs, so that the parents can drop them off, and they can do different art activities, see movies, things like that, and then the parents can go on a free date night. So we're looking forward to seeing you guys all down for First Thursday.
Sounds terrific.
And also in these, the program for this month, we have the Downtown Discount Guide for the Film Festival, which we're doing with them. It's discounts at different restaurants and shops, so when you're done with First Thursday, you can go get a bite to eat. All right?
Well, thank you. I've got a lot of invitations, too, to different receptions.
There's a lot going. You couldn't go to all of them, and that's a great thing. You can go to a few this time, and a few in March, and there's always something to do.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for doing this. I know it's a lot of work, but we appreciate it. Thank you. And Ken Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke, proud member of the homeless community. I have a sign that I've been flying, I think I might have brought this before you before. It says, "Welcome to the next paradigm." The door is open, folks. I flew a sign that kind of, some people took a liking to it, maybe allowed them to think outside the box a little bit. Will Smith's honor is among complete idiots. The problem with film is that it's a medium, and it needs to be of the best interest of everybody, and I'm sorry to say, it's in a state of deficit, because it doesn't recognize its responsibility in relation to actually, like, the material, time, space, everything across the board. It's kind of the nature of all mediums right now, similar to our news medium. I have this other, this sign that says, "An accomplished capitalist is an idiot." Now, I don't know, I don't know if people understand what, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. What is the, what are we trying to accomplish? That would be, kind of like what your job is, is to provide the means for an end in relation to this community. Capitalism, like in a school, they have a, you know, money camp. I would recommend that you guys, as well as the school board, recognize that we need to get these kids with a perspective that they become multiply accomplished, multiple disciplines. I represent somebody who is multiply accomplished in relation to the fine art of painting, and then also through athletics, tennis. I put the shame kind of the likes of Will Smith, as well as, like, Roger Federer, and show that Roger Federer's lacking in relation to his accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar. We have, oh, I'm sorry, council committee assignment reports. Mr. Horton.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report that the Downtown Organization had its annual luncheon last week, and we had a lot of council members there. And Bob Cunningham was given the award. He's an outstanding landscape architect, and the beauty of much of our city and State Street in particular is due to Cunningham's effort. He's a tireless person in this regard, and is to be congratulated for that.
Yeah, isn't that great? Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of things last week, but one I wanted to focus on. This happens, happens every Fourth Thursday of each month, is when the emergency public information communicators get together. And I went to the meeting the other day, which was a little bigger than normal. It really drew quite a few folks from leadership all over the South Coast, actually throughout the county. And part of the reason I want to report this is that I would, I think that we would want to maybe have some of these folks come and talk to us here at City Council, and have that be for the public to see on our, this was not broadcast the other day, so I think it'd be useful. Joe Gazardi made a presentation I thought was really informative and helpful on the, this, what's called the SEMs or NIMS. These are the way that we respond to emergencies, and the coordinated, how you coordinate a response to an emergency. And Charlie Johnson presented on that, also there were some others, including our own John Allman from the City's Fire Department, who was talking about the evacuation drill that will be coming up for the Mission Canyon Riviera, actually Riviera part of town. But sort of as a bottom line to this, there have been incidents recently that have happened, I think the day fire, when all the ashes kind of came over the mountain, and the windstorm we had the other day, when in fact, maybe they were, they were, they were not emergencies in their own right, but the public perception and the public information system didn't just seem to respond as well as it could have. And so those are issues that were discussed there. And I would think that maybe it's something that we could use our good offices here to illuminate and to encourage people to be prepared for emergencies, but also to come up with a better way to inform the public while something is going on.
I know the firefighters are planning on reporting to us maybe in a couple months. It's, it's part of their budget naturally, because they have the emergency, you know, that's, that's their baby right now, so.
Well, it was, it was interesting, because it was enough of a concern, I think, that the public had raised, that it would be really helpful for us to help to find good ways, where, where does somebody turn, for instance, when there is an emergency, or they think there is one? Do we have radio stations that are automated today, and we don't have the old live announcer there? So those are the kinds of questions that came up.
No, those are really good ones. Ms. Schneider, did you have something?
Thank you. I was not able to attend that meeting, but I did hear about it, and I guess another piece of it has to do with the recent cold nights, and what to do in terms of warming centers, and for seniors or people who might not have adequate heating in their homes, or people living on the streets. And I really want to commend city staff. I sent a few emails out, as did others, about what are we going to do, knowing that this cold is coming, and opening up the West Side Community Center. And I think part of that discussion was, it's not a natural disaster, like the La Conchita Mud Slider or something like that, but if you're on the streets, if it gets to below freezing, it could be disastrous, have a disastrous effect. And so if and when that does happen again, is there a system in place so people know where to go, as opposed to just trying to figure that out at that moment in time? So I appreciate the efforts that were made this last time around. I know that it was quick, and I know it was utilized well by a number of people, so. I want to commend the Film Festival once again. We're in the middle of the Film Festival. I have my little 12-pack here that I bought, and there's six punches on it. I have six more to go. Every, you know, little tidbit of chunk of time, I've been seeing some amazing movies. It's incredible how many foreign film, Oscar-nominated movies are here. I think almost all of them, if not all of them, and they don't always come back to Santa Barbara afterwards, so I, you know, it's through Sunday, and do partake in it. People, sometimes they complain about, I have to wait in line, but I found that you end up meeting some people from town or out of town, who are both really enjoying, and get to know them better, and talk about the movies. That's all part of the fun, I think. And so, so kudos to Roger Drilling and his big, and his team for the Film Fest, and looking forward to the last few days.
Good. I was at the Conference of Mayors last week, and I have given all the council members a written report, because it was a very exciting, very filled conference, but the one thing that I wanted to relay was Nancy Pelosi spoke to us, and as a child, I think from about age three to college, her father was the mayor of Baltimore, and then her brother became the mayor of Baltimore. So she's very familiar with what it's like to be the mayor, but even more important, much more important, is the concerns of cities, and the types of things that we need to look at, the items that come before us. And she said that she wanted us all to know that we have a friend in the speakers, in the speaker's office, and I thought, oh, that's, that sounds great. Now we'll see what happens. But it's, it's very good. I also wanted to note that today is the first anniversary of the tragedy that happened out in the Gladea Post Office, and there is a memorial service, I think about now, happening. I'm so sorry that none of us can be there, but our hearts go out to the coworkers and to the families of those who were killed. And I will adjourn this meeting when we get to the adjournment part, in honor of those people. Very sad. Okay, now consent calendar, and you have some to read by title only.
Item two, records destruction for Public Works Department, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Public Works Department in the Streets' Parking and Transportation Operations, Water Resources, and Water Supply Management Divisions. Item six, ordinance for introduction for fire service promotional continuous examinations, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending sections 316020 and 316100 of chapter 316 of Title III. The city personnel ordinance of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code in order to provide for open continuous recruitment in the fire service. And item eight, amendments to replacement housing plans, including recommendation B that the redevelopment agency board adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the redevelopment agency of the City of Santa Barbara adopting three amended replacement housing plans dated December 4, 2006, for 1116 De La Vina Street, 518 East Cannon Pretito Street, and 617 Garden Street.
Okay. Are there any, that's, that's reading by title only, without objection. We'll wait for the reading, and does anybody want to take anything off of the consent calendar?
Remove the consent calendar.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. A report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance Committee met at noon today for a couple of hours, and we talked about a number of issues which we have, which we will recommend on to council, but one of them I wanted to mention in particular is the City's capital program for 2008-2013. This is a very comprehensive document which projects the capital needs of the city in all areas of the city out through the period of 2013. You'll see that there's a rather outstanding amount of unfunded capital needs in here, and as we move forward with the budget process, I think for sure this year, we, we must address some of these issues, and we may have to reduce some priorities, because there are certain parts of our facilities that are deteriorating to the point that it will cost us more later if we don't. And the issue that, that this report brings forth, and the way it's presented, is really due to Mr., well, Mr. Armstrong and the facilities people both, but it's, it's very easy to read. It points out that the funds are sometimes available in areas, but the needs may not always be in those same areas. And so it's our role here, and to work with staff, to help to balance these things out. And I think 2007 needs to be the year that we address this for sure from council.
And get ourselves a good plan for financing them, is that what you're saying? Yeah, yeah, good. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, about the Finance Committee, yes, Mr. House.
There was, just, I think that we're just about at the end of the recruitment period for a couple of our boards and commissions.
Oh, good point.
And I think we should mention that.
I think it's this Friday.
It's just this Friday, right?
Yeah.
So we're at, sort of at the tail end of, and this is for, there are still open positions for the Architectural Board of Review, the Harbor Commission, and what was the third one?
Measure P.
And Measure P Committee, that's right, Measure P Committee. So for anyone who's watching, or gets this through the news, it's very important to participate, and it's a great opportunity to make a difference in your community. So we want to really encourage people have an interest in participating, to step up and fill out an application and get it in on time.
And thanks for reminding us, if this is rerun, it's due Friday, February 2nd, in the afternoon. Okay, thank you very much. Onto item number 12.
Amendments to RV parking restrictions, addition of exemption for RV parking in M1 and CM zones, and city parking lots for inclusion in the safe parking program, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending section 1044200 with respect to RV and other large vehicle parking, and chapter 2887 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code with respect to the use of recreational vehicles as temporary overnight accommodations upon private property in certain designated zones.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wyler.
I'm going to begin the staff presentation, and then I'm going to turn it over to the city planner, Ms. Weese, to ask her to briefly summarize the amendments that are taking place with this ordinance to the city's Title 28 zoning ordinance.
Okay.
As the council knows, I believe, in 2002, the City Council began a sort of a comprehensive reexamination of the city regulations applicable to the use of recreational vehicles, particularly how and when and where recreational vehicles might be used for habitation purposes, or used on an overnight basis. And this was primarily in response to two things, an apparent increase in the use of RVs for housing, in particular, using RVs parked on city streets, and as a result of the city's longstanding concern with respect to having people live in safe, permanent housing. At the time, the council formed an RV Homeless Advisory Task Force, and they met over the spring and summer, in particular, of 2002, and came back to the City Council in the summer of 2002 with a series of recommendations. One of those recommendations was to allow churches and nonprofit organizations to permit their parking lots to be used overnight by an owner of an RV under certain circumstances. The RVs couldn't be close to residentially used properties, they, obviously, they had to have the permission of the property owner, the nonprofit or the church, and no money could take, change hands. This wouldn't be a commercial transaction. And that, that program has been in place since 2002, and is apparently a successful program, and started small, and is now larger than initial years. Another recommendation from the task force was to, it had to do with the loss of single-room occupancy, housing opportunities within the city, and this was pretty much a policy endorsement or request of the City Council to, that the city do whatever it could to support the, whether it was zoning ordinances, or even monetary support for SRO projects. And I think you know, we, we feel pretty proud of our success in this area, particularly with respect to the Housing Authority El Correo project on Correo Street. And I think, although we don't often think of the Santa Barbara Mental Health Project that is currently under construction on Garden Street in these terms, it does, it will address the same population that is typically eligible for SRO housing. Another aspect, another thing that the task force recommended was the relook at the city regulations applicable to the waterfront parking lots, and that was done. And, for example, RV parking spaces were created in the waterfront lots to deal with some of the adverse impacts from having RVs frequent those lots, and the enforcement of the closing restrictions, the overnight restrictions in waterfront lots was stepped up. Finally, the City Council, in an effort to address the use of on-street parking by RV owners for overnight habitation, attempted to use parking restrictions authorized by the, the State Vehicle Code. the state vehicle code. So, that is not before you today because we wanted to go back to the Downtown Parking Committee and to get their reaction to those other locations, their input. And we're going to do that, I think, next week and then try to get back to the City Council as quickly as possible. And that, the designation of those locations is done by council resolution. So, that's a step, a third step that we'll be following up on.
Okay. Thank you. I have two speakers, Marshall Rose, followed by Dr. Gary Linker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Marshall Rose. I'm here before you today as Chair of the Downtown Parking Committee. And it may be premature since the discussion hasn't been completed with respect to the proposed resolution for additional parking spaces. I just wanted to weigh in on our discussion on the three lots that were brought before the committee. First was the expansion of the existing parking on the Castillo-Carrio commuter lot. We were supportive of that. It seems to have worked very well with the, I think, the original three or four. First of all, I should have started out to say, I'm not here about the ordinance, per se, but the additional lots. And we're supportive of the safe parking program. I am personally, and I think the Downtown Parking Committee is. But the three lots that were brought before us were, one was really as a courtesy because it's not under our purview, the City Hall lot. But we just didn't think that would work. Our familiarity with the downtown area and what is, what goes on in that particular lot when you're not using it and city staff, it is probably one of the most heavily used lots after hours and on the weekends and late at night. So, we thought there were conflicts. Also, it's probably a fairly difficult lot to negotiate with a larger vehicle. So, we didn't support that. I think staff was concurred with that. The one, the other one that we did discuss in detail was the Cota commuter lot. And the conflict with the farmer's market certainly has to be taken into account, and I think that's here. I visited fairly late at night quite a bit the last week just to see what the usage was. Weather wasn't particularly good, but the film festival is going on. Friday and Saturday night, it's quite heavily used late. It supports the entertainment district. And there's a very significant change of use to, one of the properties that's contiguous to that lot, the former Siesta Sleep Center, is about to become Cafe Glees, I think, which is, it's a very large, significant investment club. I think, I believe it's jazz-oriented. And I think they're going to put a tremendous demand on that particular lot. And my only suggestion is, I think if you go forward with this, I would really do it on a provisional basis and monitor it closely. Because I think there are some inherent conflicts between having the RVs there, even if they come in at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, and the late-night crowd dispersing. So, I would just, it's kind of, let's see what we're getting ourselves into, and it may not be the right place. It's a big lot, and if the RVs really are moved to the far east and they stay there, maybe the right number to start with isn't five, maybe it's a few, or maybe we're going to be able to add more. It seems like a prime place. I didn't realize that the waterfront was going to be excluded. We talked about a couple other lots that we thought were really good, that didn't have impact on business or neighbors. But I guess they're off the table because they're in the waterfront. We'll have a chance to look at the Depot Lot, see what the conflicts are there.
I think they talked about the Pony Lot, too.
Right. But that's in the waterfront, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
The shaded area that, is that different? Well, maybe this, Louise can speak to that.
Okay.
But we just thought that that was, that went begging at night, for the most part.
Yeah.
And both in terms of coming in at a reasonable hour and leaving at a reasonable hour, the use of that lot was less and still not right in the most prominent part of the waterfront, that it was a possibility. But it wasn't ours to give away.
Yeah.
So, those were our recommendations. We think, we didn't support the Cota commuter lot. We think that there are some conflicts. But if you do go forward, I'd really do it with caution.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I guess, are those the opinions of the Downtown Parking Committee or just you, Mr. Rose? I've forgotten.
Where?
Did the whole committee talk about this already? I think so.
On those three lots.
Yeah.
The expansion in the Carrillo commuter lot, that was supported.
The Cota.
The City Hall lot was not supported, and the Cota, excuse me, yes, the Cota commuter lot was not supported by the committee.
Okay.
But we are supportive of the program. We just think we can, there are a few better opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Linker, from New Beginnings.
Good afternoon, Mayor Bloom and members of the committee. Just wanted to be here as kind of a resource to you, but also to let you know that our program right now is fully subscribed downtown. We have, I think, 52 people enrolled in the program at the current time. We have 11 lots that we're using, including the city lot and the county administration lot, which has now grown from five to 10. And we've had 10 at the county administration building now for probably four or five months with no incidences. So, I think there's room here for expansion without causing any difficulties to people in the neighborhood. I appreciate the committee and the city's determination to try to make this program more viable. Please understand that our goal is for people to eventually transition into permanent housing, and we've accomplished that, people who are living in vehicles. Some of them are living right now in the El Carrillo. So, we've had some success in that direction. We think case management is a useful and crucial part of the program, no matter where you put it. If you put it in the CM zone, you put it in the M-zone, you put it in the waterfront, wherever you put it, we think case management is absolutely crucial. So, our recommendation to you would be that if indeed you're going to proceed with the program, wherever it is, I think case management ought to be an aspect of that. It's also a good way for a third party to mediate between the people in the RVs and the property owners if that issue comes up, or between the churches, whatever. That's what we've done. And Shaw Tally, my man on the street, does a terrific job in that mediation process. We're very fortunate to have him. And I just wanted to give you that input and be here for any other questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Schneider has a question for you.
The county lot, is that open after hours to the general public like the City Hall lot is, do you know? It is?
It is.
It's a different, it's very, it's much bigger. I know that.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if it had the same kind of...
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the council or comments or whatever? It's to the council. Mr. Barnwell?
What is your direction, Madam Mayor, as to the choice of these lots right now? What's in front of us right now?
Well, what we're looking at is the RV parking restrictions, A, and then B, the private property, too. Those two things. And then the lots, I think, we had said they're going to go back to the parking...
So, we're not necessarily looking for any comments on that from us?
We can comment and kind of steer it.
In other words, is there a request from staff that we give suggestions as to what we think those lots should be, or is that a moot point and we come back at it another time? Ordnance comes back?
It's going to be a resolution that comes back on the lots, yeah. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council. Brownie Allen, Transportation Manager. Obviously, your input and direction will be helpful when I take this back to the Parking Committee so I can have an idea of what the council's thinking of, and they can consider that when they weigh in and give a recommendation back to the council.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I was on the ordinance committee, so I'm supportive of this thing. We did discuss at length the idea of the individual RV on private property within the M1 as to whether it should be part of the program or not. I had initially thought that it wasn't going to be part of the New Beginnings program, that there would be individual property owners handling that. But the more I've thought about it, the more I wonder if we really want, if it would be in the community's interest to have individual property owners negotiating those arrangements, dealing on a daily basis. Would we find the social skills on the part of the property owner to be sufficient to deal with possibly the type of person who would be there, et cetera? And that line of reasoning led me to personally be convinced that those should be included in the New Beginnings as well. Because I think New Beginnings offers, as was said here earlier, kind of a mediation ground between the property owner and the occupant of the RV. So, I'm leaning in that direction. I would also, I support Mr. Rose's suggestion that I've got some trouble with the Cota commuter lot as well. Having gone downtown myself, that is a parking lot of choice for me when I'm down at that part of town. And I think it is for other people who are participating in the nightlife that goes on down there. And with the addition of that new bar, restaurant, nightclub, we might find incompatible uses in close proximity, which I'm not real sure would be a good idea. It's interesting, the philosophy of where do we, where should the RVs go? I think the commuter lot at Carrillo and Castillo is an ideal location. And if we can, for the following reasons. It's next to some transportation corridors. It's in an area where we don't have a lot of conflicting commercial nighttime activity. And it's also in an area where we have relatively high-density apartment buildings, which seems compatible with that kind of use. Those seem to me to be the criteria for picking another lot. And so, I'm troubled a little bit by going downtown with the lots. Maybe the one at the Fig Tree is a good one, although the Fig Tree has such a long history of having been a hotspot, that I wonder if it's the right place to go. And then I would close, so in all these respects that we have, what we have in front of us, I'm supportive of it. Those are my thoughts on the lots. I want to know why the waterfront lots are out of the discussion. Are they?
No.
Mr. Barnwell?
They're not out of the discussion because it's entirely your decision. But I think the staff inclinations were that that's a bit of a mixed message, that, you know, the map we showed you and the Title 10 parking restrictions are on-street only in that area of the waterfront. But to say that you can't do this on-street, but then to have it fairly prominently allowed in a parking lot strikes us as a bit of a mixed message.
Okay. I understand.
And possibly make it difficult to enforce the on-street restrictions.
Okay. And then lastly, Madam Mayor, are we continuing in our efforts to expand this program to other churches and et cetera? Or have we reached the maximum in that? Have we gone as far as we can go in that? Remember, there was a point at which we thought we'd reached the max, but in trying to expand the program, we're now, we seem to have defaulted to city lots. Is there, are there other lots in other churches that could be included in the program?
Well, that's Dr. Linker.
For the last two years, we've been involved in the recruitment of churches, and we continue to talk with various churches. Frankly, the mission was on board for a while, and there was one individual there who had one problem with one of the pastors, and they ended their participation, and now they're back on board. So, we continue to do recruitment, inviting churches to be involved with us. That has not stopped, but we have not seen much of the growth of that in the last six months.
Okay. Thus, we continue to look at expanding in the city lots because that's...
Another piece is that when the gasoline prices jumped up, we kind of got ourselves locked in a little bit to downtown, that a lot of the people who lived in RVs didn't want to go all the way out to Galida or even Isla Vista because we had openings there. And we continue to have some openings in Isla Vista. But the desire to be, is to be in the downtown corridor. And three or four months ago, I went on a drive-by with the chief and Shaw Tally, and we put invitations on 25 vehicles in the industrial area, just in the downtown area where RVs tend to congregate and park at night.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the remark about the priest at the mission kind of reinforces my feeling that we should have New Beginnings in there somewhere, because if we have it with a priest at the mission, we might not know what we're going to find down in an industrial-grade lot. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Where to start? Obviously, I'm supportive of changing the ordinance. I've been saying that for a while, and appreciate the work that's been done so far. One question, a couple of questions, a couple of comments. I understand everything that Mr. Barnwell said in terms of the M1 zone and that mediation piece, I think, is absolutely important. I get where the PC was going with this, though, in terms of a one unit to one property owner. And I wonder if there's a significant difference between mandating or requiring the connection with New Beginnings or a nonprofit, or strongly encouraging one. And there may be situations where one property owner and one RV owner would work, and for whatever reason, the case management is not appropriate. So, we're going to preclude that opportunity to happen by mandating that case management. So, I don't know if requiring it in the M1 zone is really, we could in the future if it becomes a problem, but perhaps we can strongly encourage it or have it be part of it. But I think that's along the lines with what the Planning Commission was trying to say. So, I understand that piece, and I think that might be something maybe we can think about. And if it becomes a problem, we can mandate it later. But it is a little different than having five or seven RVs in one location. So, that's my thought on that. Can you put the other map up of the restriction area? I wonder, however, why we want to have the limitation from the freeway south as opposed to, for example, the railroad tracks down to the waterfront, with the exception of around Casas Peranza, because I know I want to be cognizant of that neighborhood around there. But may to, so I think is it Quarantina Street that goes, is the other throughway street that goes down to the waterfront? Because in that area, it's a very industrial part of town. And to put that, it doesn't have the same kind of feel or same kind of concerns I think we hear from property owners as we do from the waterfront and the hotel owners. And so, I mean, I caught part of the ordinance committee discussion on it, I didn't catch all of it. And I don't know if there was something significant enough to make that boundary at the border of 101 as opposed to the freeway, just in that area there. So, I guess that's, I don't know, a question to my other two members of the ordinance committee here, or to staff. But it would seem to me that that would be a way, and I know New Beginnings already talks to people in that area who may be habitating there and they shouldn't, and to try to push them into or make sure they're part of a program that then will be helpful later. But I'm curious if that's something we may want to think about as part of this ordinance change. And then finally, on the parking lots. 630 Garden was listed in the staff report. What was the reasoning behind including it or not including it?
Actually, it did not, was not included when we went to the Parking Committee. It is a very small lot, and it is used late at night.
Okay. Okay. That's, and I agree, the Correo lot, for the reasons Mr. Barnwell said, is a good option. The Cota lot, considering the changes, may be problematic, perhaps, as Mr. Rose said, that it's something that we want to start now, but as, look at carefully. I mean, it's a resolution. It's not like we have to change the ordinance every time we want to change around the lots. But if it works today and maybe doesn't work in three years or two years, then that's a different scenario. So, I think in terms of encouraging new places, we could start it under the ways that Mr. Rose mentioned, but, and then keep an eye on it. The Railroad Depot, I think, is certainly something also, I think, should add to the Downtown Parking Committee, as is the Pony Lot. I understand the mixed message issue, but I think in terms of, it's going to be five vehicles in the middle of a parking lot, that's going to be very different than RVs parked all over the street everywhere. And if it's another opportunity in a good place that's not going to have the same kind of community concern as other places would, why not use it? And the waterfront one's right on the beach, I might, I would think differently. But that one is on the north side of Cabrillo Boulevard. So, I guess I'd like to add that one to the discussion of the Downtown Parking Committee and hear what they have to say, since that's part of it. And also, I just want to commend New Beginnings once again. I mean, I know, you know, they've been asked to do a lot, and we couldn't have this program without New Beginnings. And I know we're asking more and more of them. I wonder, as we move along, as we're mandating more units or more spaces and asking more of them, if then it becomes a financial issue on our part to assist them in their work. And this is not a discussion for today, but perhaps something to consider if we're going to help them recruit more spots or spaces. I mean, that's staff time. Shaw can't be everywhere all the time, so, and I'm sure there's certainly a cost associated with that. Or even, I know they have a loan program, for example, to help maintain their vehicle or to help them move into permanent supportive housing. And if there's a way we can accommodate that transition from living in an RV into housing through that program, that might be something in the future we want to consider. But again, I want to express my public support to New Beginnings, and thank you for all your work. So, there are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Question for Dr. Linker, more of a philosophical nature. I think everybody recognizes that this is not an ideal way to house people. There's no doubt about that. Is there some number greater than what we have now, but less than some other number that you could point to that we should be looking at in the next five or 10 years? Is this about where we should be in terms of placing this number? Or do you anticipate you'd like to have another 10 or 15 or 20? Or do you have any other thoughts for the more, the broader issue here?
I think as more and more people, first of all, we estimate that any one evening in the downtown area alone, there are probably over 100 people living in vehicles. That's our own just estimate, from what we've seen by being around. This is what we've seen. Okay? Now, notice I didn't say RVs, I said vehicles. People live in cars, people live in station wagons, people live in pickups, people live in vans, people live in RVs. The city wishes to open up the possibility of people who live in RVs being in these lots. And we feel we can accommodate seven or 10 more people who live in RVs who could be in these spaces. But I think as our program continues to get credibility and people feel more comfortable with it, that in the next two years, we could see our number go from 52, where we are now, to maybe 82. Because a year and a half ago, we were at 29. So, I think they're out there. People are out there. And they're in various conditions of comfort in terms of considering a program like ours. But as it continues to gain credibility, I think more people will want to take advantage of it. Because if you're enrolled in the program, we make sure you have insurance, we make sure you have current tags, we make sure if you need a loan, that you can get a loan to keep your vehicle working. So, there's some advantages for people to get involved in the program, and then we have their ear to try to get them into something more permanent.
Mr. House?
Since the, since we discussed this at ordinance and considering the recommendations of the Planning Commission, I've softened a little bit. Originally, I was, I really thought that this would be, that the participation in New Beginnings program would be a mandate, a requirement. I've spoken with some who are likely candidates for the one-off situation where they have a direct relationship with a industrial area property owner, and for which it isn't, it isn't absolutely a necessity to be involved in that exact program. So, I think that I go along with the Planning Commission. On the other hand, I agree with Ms. Schneider and Mr. Barnwell, the value of the New Beginnings program and our encouragement. And actually, the largest number, the vast majority of those who are on the street will find great benefit participating with that program and should be encouraged to do so. So, that's where I come down on that. The suggestions by Mr. Rose about the provisional nature of our arrangement at Cota Lot and monitoring, very carefully, I agree with. I do believe that there's more opportunities than we've identified so far. I think the, near the railroad station and at the Old Pony Lot are a couple that make a lot of sense, and seems like those could be well-managed and would have very little impact on anyone. And I don't think it's a mixed message. I think, I can see how one could say that and understand that rationale. But I think if you're clearly defining areas where it is okay, that's a really important part of this process. Because otherwise, the more likely tendency is that they will end up in neighborhoods and other places where it isn't appropriate, but we don't have the ability to do all the signage and everything else. So, we want to offer them some likely and good alternatives right down in this area. So, that's why I would encourage us to look more at those other opportunities, too. So, this issue that Ms. Schneider brings up about below the railroad tracks versus below the freeway as a line. You know, I think where we were really coming from, at least the initial part of it, was what's the area that the, those who had been plaintiffs in the case against the city had kind of been okay with? And that, and it was that area from the freeway toward, to the beach. There is a distinct and different character of the, of the area between the freeway and the railroad tracks. And I think one of our biggest concerns was impacts to the hotels and right along the Cabrillo of this sort of informal taking over of the streets. And I am not all that firm on holding between the freeway and the tracks as I am from the tracks to the, to the beach. So, I'd be interested in hearing what other people have to say. But I think the key there is having a very clearly signed and defined area where the impact is most heavily felt. And secondly, having alternatives, which the New Beginnings program and our arrangement with these other lots offers. And lastly, I think that this points to this other piece of the puzzle, especially when we now talk not just about the SRO project on Correo, but the new project at the mental health facility there across from 630 Garden Street, that the more that we can make those transitional opportunities available in the future, the better. Because then New Beginnings can have that wonderful success of offering somebody the wherewithal, the transition, and help them get into something which is that next step. So, I hope we can find more opportunities in the future. I know it's going to be tough with the finances and all, but any collaborative efforts that we can have to create more opportunities, like the SRO and the mental health thing, we should really look for them and take advantage of them. Because then that's a whole program.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm willing to take us now to a motion, unless there's some other...
No, go ahead, and I'll make my comments.
I move the recommendation that we have here in our staff report with the, with these, well, actually, leaving alone the Planning Commission's recommendation for not requiring a hard requirement for the New Beginnings participation, but adding language that is strongly encouraging participation. That isn't in there at this point. And then changing the boundaries to be from the railroad tracks to the beach instead of from the freeway to the beach.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that with a clarification that I also want to respect around Casas Peranza, which is in between the railroad tracks and the freeway. So, around Milpus or Quarantina would be the...
No, Casas Peranza's on the land side of the, of the railroad tracks.
Right.
It's, it's...
Right. That's my...
Oh, you want to include that?
I want to include that in the, in the areas where you cannot park.
I do agree completely.
So, the boundary, as you, I don't have Brian's pointer...
I'm sorry, it was mixed up.
But there's a place where the railroad tracks and the 101 on the west meet, right? So, that would be one. You go along the railroad tracks to, I think, Quarantina Street, and then go up to the freeway there. And that would cover the area around both the Rescue Mission and the, well, definitely around the Casas Peranza. So, that way, there wouldn't be that neighborhood impact, because I don't want to even open that can of worms, because I think...
The Rescue Mission's on Yanale, which is going to definitely be an area that's not covered by the restrictions, so...
Does that make sense? And I'd like to, I mean, I heard from Grant, who's on the ordinance committee, I don't...
Well, I also would like to make some comments. Number one, I was here when there were 400 RVs in the city. That was the estimate, not my estimate, but the estimate by the proponents of RVs. And it was a mess. And I don't want to go back to that. I don't want to go back to the time when people complained, and for good reason. I think what has saved us in this whole thing, knowing that RVs and living in vehicles is very substandard housing. The thing that has sustained me in this is knowing that Dr. Linker and his group has, have provided case management of people, getting them into housing. And I'm always very interested to read, I think it's an annual report in the summers, to see how many people have actually done that. This is not just for a vacation in Santa Barbara. You don't just come and have Dr. Linker talk to you for a couple, you know, months while you're here for fun. This is for people who are looking for housing and who need housing. I think the attitude of New Beginnings is very wonderful, and that's why I support this. Now, saying that, we are now accommodating 52 RVs. And in looking at the big picture, which is what we need to do up here, we need to decide how many we can accommodate up here, not, not how many somebody can, you know, do in their own program. And I respect Dr. Linker in saying, oh, we can accommodate whatever you want, which is very nice of him. But the question is, how many in our town? And over 100, certainly not 400. That's what we got to. That was not good, for a lot of reasons. I'm not even sure that 100 is okay. So, the only, the only way I figured out low-income and very low-income housing, how much of that do we need, is I figured out what percentage of our dwelling units we were turning over for low and very low income. Then you look at the United States and see what percentage of the people are low and very low, and you kind of think, well, if we're in that neighborhood, we're doing it. These also have to be low and very low-income people. And we're adding to that. And I'm not sure, we're already at 14% of the housing units are for low and very low. Do we want to get to 20%? Or is 15%? Or, we're adding housing units, essentially, substandard housing units to our housing stock. And we have to be very careful. We haven't had that big picture. I haven't seen the discussion. So, I want to proceed very cautiously. I don't think that wedge between the railroad tracks, I won't, I won't support the motion because the wedge between the railroad tracks and the freeway is huge. And that was, a lot of the discussion was around the park there, the Dwight Murphy Park. There's a parking lot there, and those people in that area, I will not take their phone calls. I will give them to you who vote for this.
With your permission, Madam Mayor, I'll change my motion so that it does include the original boundaries. I got your point.
I just wanted to tell you that.
So, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, we change it back to the other motion.
Madam Mayor?
But yes, go ahead, Mr. Wiley.
I think I need to point out that what we've got here today is an ordinance that is up for introduction.
Right.
The wording of the ordinance has to be set today. Typically, [beep] for you and in your binder.
Yeah, it's right in the back here.
But if we're going to change it, we've got to change that language. And with respect to this point about what the Planning Commission recommendations, it's not honestly my recollection that the Planning Commission endorsed not having New Beginnings as the, I guess case manager is kind of the best terminology for the M1 and CM zones. What happened, in my recollection, was right at the very end, two members of the public, Nancy McCready, and I believe the other woman's name is Nancy, [beep].
There's a Linda Miller.
Long-term, Linda, Linda. That's it. Long-term RV owner objected to that. And a couple of Planning Commissioners nodded their heads and said, yeah, that's a good point. I, when, and something like an ordinance, when there's a draft in front of them, unless somebody makes a motion to change it, I don't take that as a consensus of a body to make the change, that few nods of the head. It's, it's an issue that's kind of an ongoing thing, particularly when you're dealing with an ordinance. So, anyway, it's not my recollection that that was the Planning Commission's specific action.
Okay.
It is my recollection that the ordinance committee, unrequested or unsuggested by staff, said add New Beginnings as case manager to the church and nonprofit, which, you know, is on the books for more than four years, in addition to having it in the, for the M1 and the CM zone. So, of course, two members of the ordinance committee are here, so...
Right.
Madam Mayor?
So, yeah, Mr. House?
Are we referring, let's just get real specific here then, Mr. Wiley. On page four of the ordinance, are we referring to language in 2G?
Uh huh.
So...
Wait, the order of the ordinance?
You actually added, you give it some truth places at page three, at H. And this is, if you see, this is the church and nonprofits. In the future, you can't have an RV on a church and nonprofit parking lot unless they go to New Beginnings, and you go through that certification, and you get the permit for the New Beginnings.
Right.
So, that's the churches and nonprofits. And then the new section, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
The new section, of course, has that as G as well.
And G refers to the M1 zone, not, not the churches. I wasn't recommending a change in the churches. I was recommending a change in this G. In fact, I'd noted this in my, when we got down to it, that we discussed this. I had, when I left the, I'm just going to, I shared this with Mr. Barnwell the other day. When I left our ordinance meeting, I had second thoughts about our discussion and felt like, in that particular, that specific aspect, that it was unnecessary and actually could possibly be counterproductive if we were to be that restrictive. And so, it is my, my motion that we delete that G, 2G, as a, you know, we brought that up. We're the ones that created that in our ordinance committee meeting. And I'm making a motion that eliminates that. It does not eliminate the prior reference to which you just referred in 1H.
So, state your motion again.
I move the staff recommendation, which actually, when I read the original recommendation, original report, the original report, it suggested that this language was not in what was included in our packet. So, I... So I then later found it in here, and I've noted it for omission. So I'm moving the staff report with the exception...
To adopt the ordinance.
To adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
With the exception of this, now being very specific, 2G.
And you want that eliminated, okay.
That was mine. And then, in my motion, I would like us to find ways to encourage people to participate in the New Beginnings program. And that, I don't know if that becomes language in the ordinance, or if it becomes a part of the report, part of our minutes, and then the staff operates on that as an operational matter. I don't know. But that's the, that is the only change that I'm recommending to the...
Okay. When, when did your motion stop? I'm watching Susan here writing.
Staff recommendation except 2G.
Yeah. Okay, there you go. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Yeah, I know you have. I just wanted to make sure, okay. Okay, Mr. Barnwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad that we pulled out that, and we're going back to the freeway, because there's a brand-new proposed hotel right adjacent to the railroad tracks. I mean, you can walk across the railroad tracks easily, all along its entire length, but you can't across the freeway. Insofar as, we have a prohibition right now, citywide, against sleeping in an RV. And now we're going to create this special exemption that if you're in the M1 area, there will be no control, no monitoring, no permitting, no nothing. You just can be in an RV if the property owner says he wants you in the RV. And somehow, that seems like a very big jump for me, too big of a jump. Also, as, as we've discussed on so many of these types of things, management is everything about the success of these types of programs. I don't think that it's onerous on number G. I am not persuaded at all when number G says that the owner of the RV has been issued a permit for such use of the RV by a nonprofit entity designated by the city for supervising safe RV program. That just doesn't sound onerous to me. It also sounds like a safeguard. And without it, we're removing that safeguard. And so it's, I, I see, I'm unpersuaded that the, the M1 is exempt from, from this excellent monitoring program. So I can't support the motion as long as that's included. I, I do think that Ms. Schneider's point is a good one, and that I would, I would suggest that, that there be an opt-out component of it. Let's just say that, and I'm just talking about this, because I don't know how it would work, but let's just say that there's a property owner who, in fact, has the skills to be able to do this. So he rents out that RV, goes to the city, no problems, and he's doing it on an ongoing basis. And, and he finally comes to the city, maybe after the second time that he's rented it out, or not rented it, but allowed an RV to be there, and he says to the city, can I have an opt-out on this? And the city says, you know what? You've been doing good. You seem to be managing it. Because that's our whole, our whole goal, is the management of these things. And so if, if the property owner is tied into the whole mindset that it takes to do this, and has proven that he's capable at it, then I say, create an opt-out. And he can go ahead and rent it, as long as he's there, and the city says, as long as you're the property owner, we trust you, and we'll keep a liaison with you. We're not going to, you know, check on you too much. If you have any trouble, you can come to us, et cetera, et cetera. But it seems, it seems to me like the default should be at first to get the permit, or the city's permission, go through the management program. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, anybody else on the, the, the motion is to approve the ordinance without B2G, which talks, which is the New Beginnings running the M1 zone program. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it loses two to three. Okay, motion, Ms. Schneider.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to make this more interesting.
Typical lawyer, huh?
This is the Title 28 Amendment. So Charter, Section 1507 requires five affirmative votes for adoption. So this is introduction, we don't need five votes today.
Oh, right, right.
Eventually, it's going to need five affirmative votes of the council to adopt it.
Okay. Good point. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Schneider.
I'd like to move the, to introduce the ordinance as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Well, I was blinking at you, because I wanted to discuss it.
Oh, you were blinking, that means discuss.
My little light's on, my little light's on.
Oh, your light is on.
I want to understand what Mr. Barnwell was saying a moment ago, to find out if there is a way for us to provide that option, because that will be important to me. It will be important to me not just today, but it will be important to me in the future. So I want to know if there is a mechanism or way that somebody could come forward and appeal to the city, and without a, you know, major hoopla, and, and be granted an exemption from that requirement. What would it look like? How would that, how could that work?
It seems like it would have to be an amendment to this ordinance, that an exemption could be granted under XYZ circumstance, whatever it is. And that's, you know, but...
I mean, if there were, if there were, if there were a simple clause in there, or a procedure, to be able to do that, a procedure, a way to request that?
Yeah, we just haven't vetted it yet, you know? We haven't put it out there yet. But Dr. Linker looks like he might want to say something.
I've been kind of watching this process for a number of months now, and my understanding is that the whole program is going to kind of be on a voluntary kind of basis, and it'll be kind of, in a sense, complaint-driven. There's not going to be any kind of county vehicle driving through this area looking for violators. And so if, if, if a landowner and a, and a person in an RV agree to something, and that person parks in there, my understanding is they're going to be safe. I think what the city needs is some kind of backup, so if you start getting calls, you can go to somebody, and they're the person who are going to be troubleshooting the situation and handling it, and negotiating and dealing with it. And that's what we could see our role as being, to make it efficient, because we already have an operation. It doesn't require you to set up a whole new bureaucracy to make that happen.
This is my, this is my wish, is that it be just as it was described. I'm concerned that the language, the way we have it, has it flipped around. So there's no way, there's no way for somebody who's not, there's no trouble, things are cool, they're actually providing maybe even a service on the property, things are copacetic, and there's just no way for that to be okay the way this is right now. So I would like to know if there's a way that this could include an opt-out provision, or some, just some mechanism by which somebody could have come to the city and say, hey, I've got a good situation going here, and the New Beginnings program's not, not right for my person.
Mayor Paul.
Yes. If I might comment on the current program, as I understand it, and based on the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Right now, the zoning ordinance does not require a permitting or oversight by a city-approved entity, as you can see on page, I think, three of the ordinance. As Mr. Wiley pointed out, there's paragraph H, which is adding that now. So what our experience has been so far, it is that it is not required, but it has worked. The churches and nonprofits have benefited by a relationship with New Beginnings, and I think the people, sleeping in vehicles and RVs have also benefited, as Dr. Linker's explained, and you all have as well, seeing this as helping people get out of that situation, which is a city goal. So this is, it's worked well without it being required in the churches and nonprofits, but now we're putting it in as a requirement. What's happening out on the streets and in many properties throughout the city is that people are parking and living in RVs on private property, and they don't comply with the zoning ordinance now. And what I hear Councilmember House saying is, it would be nice if we could have both those that are legal and illegal, and have a distinction. And I, I am concerned, I had a meeting with Dr. Linker, where I was very concerned about how the city was going to now administer this program. And we aren't administering it now. Fortunately, they are, and we respond to occasional complaints. But if every property owner wanted to seek relief from this permit requirement, I, I don't, I don't know how yet we would do that. So I, I appreciate the desire, but right now, I'm seeing it kind of black and white. Either it's required, or it's not required. At the moment, I'm struggling to see how we might have something in between, what would be the basis deciding that this property-owner-vehicle-dweller relationship is okay, and another one, well, you really should go and be part of the program. I'm not quite sure how we would make that decision, so...
Well, I'll rest my case with, I think it would be very rare, and that you would have that kind of a request. And it is working, the New Beginnings program is working now, even without these requirements, and working very well with this sort of sense of voluntary participation. And I just wanted to see, and would really, really wish we could come in to have some way to opt out of this, if it were appropriate. And there are, I believe, certain circumstances where it is appropriate. So I won't be able to support the motion, just for that one reason. If you could come up with just some little way for somebody to get out of this, if they wanted to, and that the city would approve of it, so that's, that's it.
Okay. Okay, then we have a motion and a second. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Schneider.
Just, I know we need five votes at some point, but soon. And although I think there are better ways to improve things as it goes along, this is certainly a much, a huge improvement over current. And so I would encourage, we support this today, and if there are additional tweaks and amendments and improvements we can do in the future, we can do so. But to say no to this, I think, would send the wrong message of what the city wants to do in terms of improving a current ordinance that really needs improving. So that would just be my, my plug to, I was with you on the last one, and then, because I brought it up, but I think, you know, this is certainly much better than the status quo.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, well, to introduce it, and with no changes. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay. Okay. We do need five votes next time. We're going to take a real quick break while you all get set up. I'm sorry that took so long. That was our quickest item today, so we are in deep doo-doo here. Item 13 will be, a real quick break, okay?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, well, to introduce it and with no changes. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay. Okay. We do need five votes next time. We're going to take a real quick break while you all get set up. I'm sorry that took so long. That was our quickest item today. So we are in deep doo-doo here. Item 13 will be in real quick break. Okay? And we are on item number 13. Architecture 2030 presentation. Okay, Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. We're excited to be here today for a presentation regarding Architecture 2030. This is a movement that's occurring nationwide that has very strong support locally from a coalition that'll make the presentation a more formal presentation to you. Really started locally with a presentation in September by Ed Masria, an architect from New Mexico, that I think a number of you attended. And then a follow-up presentation was presented to city staff and other council members in the Get Part Room. And so we wanted to bring this item forward to you now regarding the 2030 Challenge. And just to give you staff's perspective on the recommendations of the challenge and how to move forward, some of the key elements that are going to be requested is that the city adopt a Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Silver Standard for city buildings, new city buildings, and for major additions and renovations. That's something that the city is already kind of looking at, at the Council Subcommittee on Sustainability, something similar to that. So I think we've already made some progress, and we can talk to you about that if you have questions. Training plan check staff and building inspectors to be LEED certified. We're in the process of doing that already, and so that is good. I think the most substantive issue is the amending of the local building code to exceed Title 24 by 20 percent. We've already begun examining that and looking at how to do that, and that will require more research and analysis on our part, as well as, I think, broader outreach to the community to make sure people are supportive of this. We've got a very strong coalition here today supporting it. But doing some additional outreach to others in the community is important. We also think that might require state approval to exceed Title 24. We're only aware of one city that's done that, City of Palm Desert, I think it is. And so we're following up with them and trying to understand the logistics and bureaucracy of going about and doing that. But that requires some more work. Broadcasting the Ed Masria lecture on City TV Channel 18 with your consent is something that can be a just-do-it and get that going, and that's really not complicated at all. Our main recommendation is that you hear the presentation, ask questions, give us your feedback and reaction, and we would recommend that you refer it to the Council's Subcommittee on Sustainability, because there are a lot of overlapping issues of what we've already been working at. Examine that a little more detail, and then have any action items be brought back to council, including a resolution that they're going to recommend be adopted. And then also look at the Title 24 issues and what other actions the council may need to adopt ordinance files in that regard. But we're very excited as staff about this and think this is a great proposal and a great presentation, and would recommend that you allow Mr. Davis to come up and kick off their presentation.
Okay, we have a question now for you, Mr. Casey, from Mr. Horton.
Mr. Casey, I think staff review is good, but I'd like to suggest that you include the finance staff in that review and not just the committee. The reason I say that is the finance committee is going to want to know if there are any implications for bidding construction projects that the city might have. We're looking at a capital plan here that's many millions of dollars between now and 2013. And I would just be really interested in knowing if we adopt this, what would be the potential impact on this?
Good question.
And I have no idea. It might be, you might come back and say there's no impact at all, which would be great, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So I couldn't, I couldn't make that recommendation more strongly that you do something to include this. Thank you.
Yeah. We also have to figure out the savings at the same time, because there are savings.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, Dave Davis, Executive Director of the Community Environmental Council. And here today is part of a broader coalition, which I'm happy to be part of. As you can see, both AIA Santa Barbara, the Sustainability Project, and the Santa Barbara Contractors Association, including Built Green Santa Barbara, have been meeting to bring this challenge to you today. And we too are excited. We're also concerned that, in fact, this issue, greenhouse gas emissions and climate change is so critical to the future that, in fact, it's hard to get your arms around in terms of an action program. And in fact, it's hard to have a cost estimate as to what the benefits or costs are. As you know, the Stern Report out of England talked about the effect of global warming and what it could do to the world economy in the next 20 to 50 years, and it's staggering as to how serious this problem is. And as serious as it is, this year, of course, I think, public awareness became outstanding for a lot of different reasons, including Al Gore's movie Inconvenient Truth, and the amount of press coverage which was given. We also believe that this issue will be a leading political issue over the next two years, leading into the 2008 election. You know, because the mayor did sign on to the conference of mayor's sustainability resolution and brought that back to you, and you endorsed that. So I don't think we need to educate you necessarily as to the importance of what's before you today. But I think last fall, when we brought you and us as a coalition with City College and other, our other partners, brought Ed Masria here to talk about the Architecture 2030 Challenge, it was a real seminal event, right? There was a buzz afterwards. In fact, that night, or the next morning, I should say, one of our partners, Mike Holiday, who hopefully will talk today, sent an email around to us coalition partners titled Sleepless in Santa Barbara, right? And it was a clarion call to say, you know what? What we heard last night is a path that we here at a local level can make a significant difference with respect to this issue, which is so gargantuan. It's something that we can do. After the Masria lecture, the coalition actually stayed together, at least accorded of these particular individuals. And I hope people who have been involved today, when they come up and talk to you, will identify themselves as active members of the coalition, because I really have to thank them for all the support, background, research, actions that they have done to get us to this point. But I want to first tell you, this is an incredible group of individuals, which will be incredibly strong team to work with you to make this a reality here. Use us, because I think it's very important that this comes from the community, especially the affected community, the building community in this regard. So what we're going to do today is to give you a little presentation, almost a mini Masria lecture. Joe Androlitis will do that for about 10 or 15 minutes. Dennis Green then is going to come up and give you some case examples of Santa Barbara, and I'll close with a resolution. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Androlitis. Joe?
Got a new Dennis?
Thank you, Dave. Dave's been pivotal in making all this happen, so thanks. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name's Joe Androlitis. I'm past president at AIA, and I'd like to thank staff and city council for the opportunity to speak with you. We are all very excited about the prospects of what we're going to discuss today. Shortly after Ed Masria's lecture, Marty, you called me and asked the AIA, along with all the other organizations that were up on stage that night, to present a proposal to meet the 2030 Challenge. Well, I'm proud to stand here today to represent four fine organizations. All these organizations have been sustainable advocates for quite some time, and we've been meeting on a regular basis to author a proposal to meet the 2030 Challenge. Many of you have already had the opportunity to see Ed Masria speak, but for those of you on council and in the audience who have not heard his message, I'll present a quick summary of his presentation. Despite the numerous warnings that we hear today about global warming, we continue to burn fossil fuels and dump millions of tons of CO2 into our atmosphere, which is warming the surface temperature of the earth at an alarming rate. Over the last century, the surface temperature has increased by 0.7 degrees Celsius. The most recent average temperature change is 0.7 degrees Celsius per millennium, not per century. We have also managed to raise the level of CO2 in the atmosphere from about 270 parts per million to 378 parts per million today. Statistics show that our current rate, at our current rate, we could reach 850 parts per million by the end of this century. U.S. oil and natural gas production has been in decline since the 1970s. These reserves are limited. With global oil reserves having a static lifetime of 42 years and natural gas 63 years, coal is soon becoming the fossil fuel of choice. With the U.S., China, Australia, and India having plenty of it, coal will become the cheap and dirty fix to fill the void. By combining the annual energy required to operate residential, commercial, and industrial buildings, along with the embodied energy of industry-produced building materials, Ed Masria has exposed buildings as the largest energy-consuming and greenhouse gas-emitting And to support the building sector, the U.S. alone is projected to build 1,300 to 1,900 new power plants over the next 20 years, about one plant every week. In addition, the U.S. will add 22 million fossil-fuel-burning mini-power plants in new buildings over the next 20 years. These are the furnaces, boilers, and hot water heaters that directly burn oil, natural gas, and propane. So, energy conversation today, what are the tools that we're using today to conserve energy? Well, fortunately, in California, we have our Title 24 Energy Efficiency Standards. Because of Title 24, we use 30 percent less energy on average when compared to the national standard. This graph illustrates the per capita electricity use in California versus the per capita electricity used for the country. So you can see, we are already ahead of the game. The U.S. Green Building Council offers LEED, a benchmark for the design, construction, and operation of high-performance green buildings. It recognizes performance in five key areas of human and environmental health, sustainable site development, water savings, energy efficiency, material selection, and indoor air quality. Locally, the Santa Barbara Contractors Association has created Built Green Santa Barbara, a voluntary self-certification process designed to create market distinctions for builders and property owners who incorporate green building practices in their projects. The self-certification checklist addresses several important areas, including water conservation, energy efficiency, indoor air quality, and material selection. So what can Santa Barbara do? Well, by 2035, three-quarters of our built environment will be either new or renovated. This transformation over the next 30 years represents an historic opportunity to affect climate change. If we implement policy to reduce energy consumption in the building sector, we can reverse the effects of global warming. If we continue to do business as usual, we will face disastrous environmental impacts. In order to initiate the adoption of a climate action plan throughout the country and the world, Ed Masria has authored the 2030 Challenge. The 2030 Challenge reads as follows: All new building projects and major renovations meet a fossil-fuel-energy-consumption-performance standard of half the national or country average for that building type. A minimum amount of existing building area to be renovated to use one-half the fossil-fuel energy that currently, they currently consume. To bend that curve down and take the new building standards down a notch every 10 years, at 2010, the reduction target for new construction and renovations would be 60 percent. 2015, 70. 2020, 80. 2025, 90. And 2030 would be carbon-neutral, requiring no fossil-fuel energy to operate. So today, we ask that you adopt a resolution accepting the 2030 Challenge and direct staff to begin implementation. We ask that you implement the challenge by, first, adopt LEED so that all municipal new construction additions and major renovation projects achieve LEED Silver Certification with a minimum greenhouse gas reduction of 50 percent by Earth Day 2007. The private sector is already recognizing the benefits of LEED certification, as well as many other municipalities. In fact, today, one of our clients, Whole Foods, has recently informed us today that they want to pursue LEED certification of the proposed store in Hitchcock in State. So we believe that if the city leads by example, others will follow. To achieve the 50 percent reduction, we simply need to make one credit a prerequisite on the energy and atmosphere category. Since Title 24 requirements already give us a 30 percent reduction, we only need to achieve an additional 20 percent reduction to meet the goal. The U.S. Green Building Council has already recognized the 2030 Challenge and plans on revising the energy and atmosphere prerequisite to meet the challenge in a future revision. Built Green can also be revised so that a two-star rating has the same prerequisite. Second, encourage staff to implement a plan to train planners, plan checkers, and building inspectors to be LEED accredited. And third, whoops, last one, excuse me. And third, amend the local building code to require that all construction, public and private, exceed the Title 24 energy requirements by 20 percent. Finally, we ask that you participate with the Architecture 2030 Coalition in community outreach. While we take the LEED and professional community group outreach, we ask that you broadcast Ed Masria's lecture on community access television, and that you allow us to work with you on the Title 24 amendments and incentives, such as accelerated development review process, priority permit processing, public recognition and awards, and reduction or deferral of planning and building permit fees. We have a few examples that I'd like to bring Dennis Allen up here to discuss about some projects currently in the Santa Barbara area that meet the 2030 Challenge.
I think Dennis has a new surname. Dennis Green.
It's a great name to live up to.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for considering the acceptance of the 2030 Challenge and our suggestions for implementation of this challenge. I'm going to focus just briefly on the part of the, of our recommendations that are, relate to the private building sector, both commercial and residential projects. What really impresses me with this is it's really just a continuation of what the state has been asking us to do for the last 30 years with the Title 24. We're just saying we want to get there a little faster. And the part that's so wonderful about this is that it gives a lot of room for flexibility of how you meet the tighter energy budgets that we are asking that we sat together. We have a few projects that I just want to focus, all of these projects are really quite green, but we want to just focus on the conservation and the reduced energy use in the projects. Some of them actually are generating energy from alternative sources and are using less fossil fuel in the projects, both from the generation of power. But all of these projects are meeting what we're asking that the private sector step up to the plate and do. This particular project was a remodel over in the, off of Lacumbra, and it exceeds Title 24 by 41 percent. Every one of these projects, these four projects we're going to focus on just briefly, have taken steps to exceed Title 24, and they're doing it with off-the-shelf, standard components, and it's just paying attention. They're relatively easy to do. Most of them have had very minimal, if not zero, impact on the budgets of the project. This is a mixed-use project done by Pikert Associates, and it exceeds Title 24 by 20 percent through, again, just paying attention to the elements that use energy in our buildings. This particular project was a very tight-budget project, a remodel in the San Roque area, and it kept the same original framing and the roof and so forth of the house, did some add-on, but by just, again, paying attention to both the budget and the steps that could be taken, it exceeds Title 24 by 23 percent. This particular house had absolutely no insulation in it before and was a very leaky house, even though an attractive house in an older neighborhood, a project that was built in This childcare center is a project of Cornell Associates, and again, doing just a few minimal things to pay attention to the energy budget, they exceeded the Title 24 by 20 percent. The last thing I would say is we have a project that's a four-unit infill project with the city right now that's going through the approval process. And again, we're doing nothing unusual in this project, but it looks like we're going to beat Title 24 by over 90 percent. And again, that's with, our initial figures look like maybe a half percent increase in cost on the project. The paybacks are going to be almost immediate and for the whole life of this building in
we presented that to you today. First, I want to say, we have no qualms with respect to the deferral that you have today, even though it does concern us because we believe, and let me just tell you why, okay? We actually went to the extra step of drafting a resolution to get this process off the ground. You have that as a thing, and of course, you have the details up here. Next Monday, James Hansen of NASA Goddard Center is speaking out at UCSB. If you remember in the Masuria lecture, he was the one who basically has led the, if you will, charge to talk about the fact that it is imperative that we, as a society, move now, that in fact, there is probably upwards of maybe ten years by which it could make a difference, and after that, the effects upon our climate may be irreversible from what we've done over the last hundred years. I remember working here and taking over ten years just to do Paseo Nuevo. And to think that that type of timeframe is something where we're asking basically for significant changes in how we live and do business is very daunting. But I can't, I can't stress more than in fact, taking another year to talk about it at this point is very serious. So, we did try to kick-start this process with the resolution. We would hope that you would adopt it today, but we do defer to the recommendations of staff in terms of sending it to the subcommittee. I'd like to introduce all the members of the coalition, but I think it's a little bit late, that when they come up here, I hope they introduce themselves to you in that regard. And with that, Madam Mayor, thank you so much for having us on your agenda today.
No, thank you. It's very good. Mr. Burnwell, Mr. Burnwell is the head of our Sustainability Committee and has done a great job. So, I think he spoke two years ago about talking about giving a sustainability element to the general plan, and the rest of us went, "What? What is that?" So, I thank you for your leadership on that.
Well, thank you, and I, I went to the famous seminal lecture myself, and I'm still not over it.
Oh.
But I'm very proud of the council for, and when I made the suggestion a couple of years ago that we need to get our environmental policy documents together, which we really don't have any, and that the idea would be that we would have some matrix through which every single request of the city, I don't care if you're requesting to put in a hot-water heater, or requesting to build a building, or requesting that we buy your fleet of cars, everything passed through a matrix that's associated with greenness. We weren't real familiar with the vocabulary. Mr. Armstrong responded and established our internal green team, but then, we now have a subcommittee of the city council that's been operational for about six or eight months, which we call our Sustainability Subcommittee. And so I'm glad to say that we're ready to look at this in an official council way, and to refer this to that Sustainability Committee and, you know, kind of iron out what we can do and how we can do it. And I agree with you that time is of the essence. I appreciate the mayor having given me some of these kudos, but, you know, she went to several of these mayoral national meetings, and she herself has led the charge, and every single person on this council is just behind it a hundred percent. I got myself into deep trouble when I tried to get St. Francis remodeled to include some solar, and I'm still not done with them, but I have to do it offline because it's too embarrassing for all of us to say it out loud. But I look forward to working with them on that. So we have some speaker slips, is that correct, Madam Mayor?
We do.
And then I'd be glad to make a motion when the time comes.
Okay, and we can't forget our initial, this is fifteen oh seven, section fifteen oh seven, is it? Or do I have the wrong section? That says we need to live within our resources.
Oh, yeah.
Which is just the ultimate in sustainability. We had no clue what we were doing. I mean, you know, we knew what we were doing then at that time, but how appropriate that is? And that was, what, twenty-some years ago?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen eighty-two. There you go. Amazing. So we have some speaker slips, so let's start. Ken Locke, followed by Steve Crandell. Steve's been here a while.
My name is Kenneth Locke. As I've spoke before, arcs issues, I'll speak before this issue, in relation to architecture, homes, this economy as we know it is bound for a fall and a collapse. And I think that the focus and that little emphasis should be put on what we're going to do after it falls and reestablish things from a kind of a ground-up type of thing. Biblically, Jesus made those people aware about the nature of the church. They were like, "Jesus, look at the church, look at the stones, everything." He said that there'll be a day when not a stone will be standing upon another stone, that the stones will be thrown down. And I interpret that in relation to shame, because actually what's going on is actually shameful. One word that I think needs to be included in this dialogue is the word "heal," and that process cannot actually begin without recognizing the root and building from that. There's a concept of an accordance in relation to a community that works together, plays together, and so forth, and there, right now, this relationship that this community has in relation to wealth and ownership needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Crandell, followed by Michael Holliday.
Madam Mayor, councilors, it's great to be here today. I speak, I'm a writer and a consultant. I work in the city. I grew up in Santa Barbara. But I'm not here to speak to you as a writer, but as a father, I have four children. I'm a lucky man, oldest seventeen, youngest two. When the two-year-old, when we get to 2030, the date in question, the two-year-old will be twenty-five, in the prime of his life. And the question we have to address, and particularly you as our leaders, is, will our environment be in its prime? I want you all, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir in a sense, but I want you all to consider one word, which is legacy. When I was at Santa Barbara Junior High and at Santa Barbara High School, we were taught something in history called manifest destiny. You may be familiar with it. Basically, the idea was, "It's there, we'll take it." In fact, it's our God-given right to take it. And what I'd like to suggest to you is, the model is broken. That was a myth. Maybe we didn't know it when I was learning history, but we certainly know it now. It's not manifest destiny, it's manifest dead end. And especially when you think about the environment. Life is not about an arrow reaching a certain goal of GDP or production of units or even wealth. It's about a circle. Nothing has taught me that more than being a father. You see a child go from being very helpless in your arms to becoming a young man, and you feel somehow that there's something good about life, that there is something important that we do here. When you make your laws, when you make your ordinance, and when you take care, when the staff considers things, they're taking care of people. And so, the legacy we leave is important because it's the legacy we leave to our children. I urge you to take action in your own measured way, but as quickly as possible, to support this. Because CEC, and I'll admit it, I'm a supporter of what they do. They're about sustainability. That's a buzzword. What does that mean? It's about a circle, isn't it? It's about raising your kids. It's about wanting a world where our children and great-grandchildren have a place that they can enjoy. And it's also about community. It's the Community Environment Council. And part of being involved with your community is taking care of the place where the community My son Nathaniel is going to be twenty-five in 2030. I know from my own standpoint, I want us to look back and say, "Wow, we made some good choices." Because now, that CO2 is going down, and the future is brighter. We've got other worries, but it's not that the world's going to be too hot to live in when we get to the year twenty-one thousand, twenty-one hundred. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michael Holliday, followed by Tam Hunt.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, good afternoon. My name is Michael Holliday. I'm an architect, a member of the AIA, and also a member of the U.S. Green Building Council, which is part of our LEED accredited certification process. I'm also a member of the coalition that's been meeting since, well, I think since September. You know, I just, I thank God I live in a beautiful place like Santa Barbara. I travel a lot, especially down to Los Angeles, and to come back here is just a piece of paradise that I think we all treasure. But I'm speaking here today really on support of this measure, the global challenge, and also that we don't take for granted those things that are all around us, specifically the paradise that we live in and the changes that we can make here to sort of, one word came home to me after the Masuria lecture was, "Think globally, act locally." Something's been bantered around for years and years, and I really thought about that. And I, like Councilman Burnwell, I'm still not over that lecture. Because when I went to that as an architect, I've been studying these issues since 1983. I got my master's degree in environmental design and architecture at Cal Poly, practicing architecture for twenty years, but something happened at that lecture that I can't really get my arms around. The light came on because it showed me what we can do in this community to make a huge difference in the emission of greenhouse gases, and it's not that complicated. We're problem-solvers, we're architects, we're optimistic by nature. We think there is ways and there are ways to solve these problems. So when I sent out the email sleepless in Seattle at 3:00 a.m. to a bunch of you guys, I couldn't sleep. I got up, I looked at Ed Masuria's website, I looked at everything. I said, "We can do this, we can make this happen." So in a big way, today is a culmination of a lot of our hopes and dreams. I would like to encourage you to adopt this challenge. I think there is a way to design and engineer buildings to make a real and significant contribution to solve the greenhouse-gas emission problem that we all are facing. I want to acknowledge that I am addicted to power and electricity like this society is. I love it. I've got everything on all the time. I've gone around, I've learned a lot about turning off computer screens just in my office, going around and turning off every computer screen when it's off at night. Saves a tremendous amount, and Tam might speak a little bit more about that. I mean, it's the amount of emissions that a suburban running all year long will emit. If you just go around your office and turn off the computer screens, even though they're on sleep, they save a lot more energy when they're off. Simple things that make a big difference. As an architect, we are always dealing with the words "code minimum." Code minimum is the requirement that the developers and our clients put on us because typically, they don't want to spend any more money than they have to. We always try to bring creative ideas to the table, we always try to bring energy-conserving measures to the table, but it's always driven by code minimum requirements. The reason that we feel that an ordinance is proper and is order because the voluntary measures don't seem to be having the effect that we all might hope they would. I'm here today, in addition to representing myself, I'm representing my wife and my three young boys, all of which, interestingly enough, their science projects are focused on global warming. One is doing his study on the effect of increased carbon dioxide concentrations on giant Pacific kelp in the Santa Barbara Channel.
Interesting.
His hypothesis was that if there's more CO2 in the water, it would enhance the photosynthesis because you've got more of that source. Well, he found out the exact opposite doing his research out at UCSB, that it actually, there's a dynamic balance there, that it increases the acidity of the water, and it doesn't work that way. The kelp actually grows slower when he increased the CO2 concentration in the saltwater. My other two sons are doing things on energy conservation, on energy generation out of seasonal streams. Just really amazing. They saw the Ed Masuria lecture. They came away with, "Hey, I want to do a science project that relates to these kind of problems that we're dealing with." I'm encouraged by that, I'm excited by that. So I think what we're all here today to encourage you to do is to think about the future, to think about the opportunity that we have to make some relatively simple changes, and for the city of Santa Barbara to take the lead, certainly on your own buildings. I mean, to me, that's a no-brainer. We would love to see you adopt this as an ordinance that applies to the construction of other, of private-sector projects, but it's something that we've got to do. So in closing, Edmund Burke once well said that "All that is required for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." There's a lot of discussion today about what's good and what's evil, but one thing for sure, we cannot continue to pump billions of tons of CO2 into our atmosphere and not think that it's going to have some prolonged and irreversible effect on our environment. So, I'd encourage you to strongly consider this. We're excited to be a part of the team to help implement these changes, and we thank you for hearing us today.
Thank you. Tam Hunt will be followed by John Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Tam Hunt. I run energy programs at the Community Environmental Council, and I'm really pleased today to see the level of support we've received already. Great presentations, of course. Probably enough has been said already, but I'll add a few more comments. Governor Schwarzenegger made news last year by saying the debate is over on climate change. And this, of course, made the news because he's a Republican saying this, and this is not traditionally a Republican issue. It's now become a bipartisan issue, or a nonpartisan issue, if you will. The governor shortly after signed AB 32, the Global Warming Solutions Act, into law in September last year. That calls for California to reduce its emissions by about twenty-five percent by 2020. That's a very tall order, because of course, California's a growing economy, so we're talking about actually reducing emissions, not simply slowing down. We're talking about going back to 1990 levels. Right now, we're getting more involved, we've been to CEC, getting more involved in state policy issues, and AB 32 does not apply to local governments. But of course, local governments can do a lot to help the state achieve its goals. And so you're getting ahead of the curve by looking at these issues today. I wanted to add one more comment, too. In the STORM review, Dave, my boss, mentioned this, and the STORM review is a very rigorous report for the UK Treasury, looking at global economic impacts from climate change, and they found that by the end of this century, all economies in the world could expect to see a five-to-twenty percent drop in GDP on an annual basis due to climate change, unmitigated climate change. If we instead invest one percent of annual GDP to mitigate climate change, we can avert most of those effects. So it's a pretty simple, if this analysis is correct, a pretty simple determination. It makes a lot more sense to invest this money today, even if it is technically more expensive in the short term. And certainly, finances are a big factor in moving forward with the private-sector piece of what we're recommending today. And we are also currently developing more detailed financial information about the impact to local builders and residents, of course. Again, I want to congratulate you for doing your inventory, and this end will be complete very soon, in time for the March conference here in town. And I wanted to stress also the impact outside of this city and this county from what you guys are contemplating doing. And certainly with our program, Fossil Fuel by Thirty-Three, the impact will primarily be local. We're about to wrap up our blueprint, this long process of determining how we should get off fossil fuels, in a few weeks here, actually. And the next step is then to create a package we can send to other communities to do the same thing. This is already happening. Marin County has actually adopted a Fossil Fuel by Thirty-Three goal.
Oh, good.
And they've gone a step further. And they are a county organization, of course, they're not a nonprofit like we are. They have actually, in their document, shown how their general plan incorporates these elements. And so, the sustainability element of the general plan for the city, definitely, we would recommend, should incorporate this goal especially, and hopefully, the bigger-picture goal also. So, in closing, again, think to the impacts outside of this community. Definitely, the city of Santa Barbara wants to be viewed as a leader on these issues, and they are, you are already. But there's a lot more that can be done, and to my knowledge, no city has actually officially adopted and codified the 2030 Challenge goals. So that'll be a first in the nation if you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kelly will be followed by Joe Campanelli.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm John Kelly. I've been designing and constructing buildings in this area for over thirty years. As a local architect, a member of the AIA, the Sustainability Project, and the Architecture 2030 Coalition, I support the proposed resolution. As a council, you deal with many important issues. However, I believe that reducing greenhouse-gas emissions is the critical issue of our time. One way to reduce the emissions, as you've heard, is to increase the energy efficiency of buildings. We have a historic opportunity to be part of the solution to the climate crisis. Somebody else... Somebody else has already said it, but I want to repeat it, "Think locally, think globally, act locally." Buildings are locally governed, designed, and built, so we have the authority and responsibility to take action. Many local projects have already been constructed incorporating green building principles and substantially increased energy efficiency. For example, recent residential remodels I have designed using off-the-shelf technology are 30% to 50% more energy efficient than state Title 24 requirements. Since the functional life of a building is 30, 40, 50 years and beyond, green building benefits accrue over time. One of my favorite quotes describes this vision, "A building should be like a tree. It should thrive on the sun's energy while enhancing its surroundings." I think this vision can also apply to our community. The sooner we improve our standards, the more effective our action will be. I urge you to work with us to incorporate improved green building principles and standards here in Santa Barbara as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Campanelli will be followed by Scott Hopkins.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Joe Campanelli. I've been a builder for 30 years in town, and I sit on the Education Foundation for the Contractors Association, their Built Green Program, which you'll remember, we took a while to get an ordinance passed and a resolution, not an ordinance, but a resolution to support, and we had the time to do that. But wow, we are a part of history today, a big part of history, and this is just one of the little ripples in the pond that affects other things. So obviously, this is the choir. There's no preaching to be done here. We're just waiting for what the song that we're going to sing is going to be. And one of the stanzas of that song is this 2030, and it's really a critical one, and this is going to be a very easy process for the city. Because if you look around this room, it's not just these organizations and individuals. There are other organizations in Santa Barbara and citizens that will get behind this. And so there's, you have probably the best support team, the easiest sell of anything you've had to try to do here. And it will take our collaboration with staff to help you make this get into the community. So you have a piece of paper I sent you.
Yeah.
I was looking at my Edison bill for December, and I thought, "God, could Christmas lights cost that much?" And my friends in Sacramento that are in the Senate Finance Committee tell me that we're still paying for Davis's issues, and that if we think our bills are tough now, they are going to continue to climb. So in looking at that bill, I noticed that it's a required state law, that Edison show you where their energy sources come from. And if you look on that piece of paper, it shows a 2005 power mix and a 2007 power mix. And on the left, the first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items are eligible renewables. They went up from 5% to 16% by 2007 is what they're projected. That's 16% of the 100%. Now, in the area of coal, if you look at what Edison's already doing, they went from 38% in 2005 to 7%. So they're already on board with this. But then you look down, and hydroelectric came down to 6% from 24%, but natural gas, nuclear, and others compose about 62%. So there's a lot of room for improvement there, and they're very aggressive about doing this. So the one other point that I'd like to make is that the Built Green Program that the Contractors Association has spent considerable amount of money on is, as well as LEEDs, goes beyond just energy. So this 2030 is an important part of the whole issue that's before us about our environment. And the Built Green Program is about to incorporate the 2030 into the point system so that we can increase the star rating to include voluntarily people to push themselves to meet this 2030 Challenge.
That's great.
And the Built Green is a perfect complement to the LEED program. So where you have community large projects, national large projects, and people that will incorporate LEEDs, the missing link is what would the average person do? What's their contribution to this solution? And that's, I think, where the Built Green Program is the perfect symbiotic partner with LEEDs and assistance to the city, and those two things working together are really powerful. So closing, just saying is that this is a collaboration of city and local organizations and citizens, and we're going to be the ones writing the environmental song that is our legacy to our children, that's what's mentioned earlier. And they'll inherit a world that's different than the one that we're headed towards if we're willing to step up and own it today. And this 2030 Challenge is a critical addition to the green goals that this city has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for all your work. Scott Hopkins, followed by Dan George.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Scott Hopkins. I'm an architect at Packer Group Architects, and I'm here to lend support of Packer Group for this initiative. Our office is already fully committed to the 2030 Challenge, and we're striving to have all of our projects exceed Title 24 by 20%. Given that most of our work, or a large portion of our work, is low-income and very-low-income multifamily housing, this is not an easy task. But we're finding that most of our clients are very receptive to the notion of saving money over the life cycle of the building. And one great example of a project we're working on in the city of Lampok right now is a very-low-income housing project that's squeezed onto a tiny site. There's not a lot of opportunity to orient the building to the sun, but yet with intelligent architectural and mechanical design, and a few solar panels on the roof, we're able to achieve a 40% excess over Title 24 requirements. So the goals of the 2030 Challenge are entirely possible and doable with today's technology. What we really need is the will and the mindset to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, very well put. Dan George, followed by Ivor John.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for having us, and I'd like to compliment the CEC and the Coalition members for their great presentation. Santa Barbara Contractors Association has about 400 business members, and we employ somewhere between 4,000 to 10,000 employees here on the South Coast, and very happy to announce that our board has unanimously endorsed the Architecture 2030 Challenge. So we're very excited about it. I feel that Built Green Santa Barbara is the, provides the very necessary tools to achieve green building, and specifically, things about Built Green, there are a lot of things like embedded energy costs, like how far you bring materials to a site, clean water, clean air, things that go beyond the Title 24. But we do encourage you to adopt an ordinance that increases the Title 24 standards for the city of Santa Barbara most specifically. And finally, in closing, and let's be brief, I'd like to recommend that Santa Barbara not just sign up for Architecture 2030 and say, "Me too," let's say, "me first." I would recommend that we go ahead of the Architecture 2030 by a year or so. So when Mardi goes back to the mayor's conference next time, she has something truly to brag about. Thank you.
Thank you, I brag anyway, whether I have anything or not. Ivor John, followed by Dennis Thompson, another green Dennis.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Ivor John. I'm president of the Community Environmental Council, and I'm really proud to stand before you today in support of this proposal. Joel Lieberman says that global warming constitutes one of the greatest challenges of our time, threatening our environment, our economy, and our public health. Today, we can see with our own eyes what global warming is doing. In that context, it becomes truly irresponsible, if not immoral, for us not to do something. The urgency of the problem demands urgent action. CEC has set a goal for the community to become fossil-free by 33. We will meet this goal, not because we set unrealistic targets based on wishful thinking, but because we develop sound plans and emission reduction targets that challenge and engage the community. This proposal for improving our building energy standards is an excellent step in that direction. Our local architects and contractors have taken up the challenge, and they've partnered with others in the community to develop this aggressive proposal. They should be commended for this bold initiative, and it shows what's possible when community partnerships come together to work on these challenges. Turning down or delaying this proposal indefinitely will send a negative message to the community at the very time we need our leaders to inspire them and motivate them to action. Strong leadership from the council on this resolution can make a difference to this community for many years to come. Please don't miss this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Thompson, and will be followed by Karen Feeney.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dennis Thompson, and I'm a member of each one of those groups.
Good for you.
Every one of them. And I'm a member of the 2030 Coalition, and like everyone else, I'd like to encourage you to pass this resolution, partly because I'd like to see Santa Barbara become an environmental leader again. I think we were leaders in the '60s and the '70s, but now I read about Austin, and Boulder, and Seattle, and Portland, and all the wonderful things they're doing, and I get jealous. So I'd like to see us take this bold step and be right out there. I'd also like to assure you that this is not a high standard that we're setting. It's not a terribly hard thing to do, like Dennis and John said. We're routinely getting 20% to 50% increases above the Title 24 minimum standards. The state's going to increase those standards soon anyway, we'll just be one little step ahead of them. You can't control the automobile emissions, you can't control the coal-fired power plants, but this is one thing you and we can control, and we're here to help you do it. So thank you.
That's a good point. Karen Feeney, followed by Roy Prince. And yes, we are jealous of Portland, but that's the way that is. What can we say?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Karen Feeney. I'm a member of the Sustainability Project and the Santa Barbara Contractors Association and an active member of this coalition. I've been a very active participant in this environmental community for the last over 20 years, and I have to say that this is one of the most exciting events that I've been involved with now as a member of the building community. It's pretty amazing that the building community has taken a leadership role to implement this environmental challenge, and together, working with you and the rest of the community, I think we really can make a significant impact in reducing global warming. I just want to let you know that we're already beginning the training efforts that Joe mentioned. Two weeks ago, I went with a number of the people in the coalition to a joint meeting of the AIA and the Santa Barbara Contractors Association. We had over 60 people participating at that event where we showed the Masria, a shortened version of the Masria lecture. I would have to say that the overwhelming feeling in the audience at that meeting was excitement, enthusiasm, willingness to support this activity, and a feeling that the members of this building community could be heroes in being a part of moving this forward. I want to just mention another significant event that's coming up that you should be aware of, and that's on February 20th. Ed Masria and Architecture 2030 Challenge is offering what they're calling the 2010 Imperative. What Ed said in his presentation is that members of the student community, the architectural students, the planning students, and the environmental science students are not learning these principles still in their schools. And so on February 20th, it's going to be, there's going to be, it's actually a global training. There are satellite down leaks at a number of architectural schools around the world, not just in the United States, but in South America and in Europe and Canada as well. And we can all tap into that training that's going to be from 9:00 in the morning till 12:30 at noon by going to the Architecture 2030 website. You won't have that satellite live contact, but you can submit emails, you can watch the process going on. I think it's very exciting. My daughter is considering being an architect, and I'm going to have her listening to this. So just in closing, I really thank you for listening to us today, encouraging you to be proactive in this whole effort and take a leadership role in the state of California, as has been alluded to here in this room, and I'm looking forward to working with you to help make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you for all your work, too. I mean to say that to everybody, but it's been wonderful. Roy Prince will be our last. You can tell an architect by that neat square writing, I love it.
Madam Mayor and Council, my name's Roy Prince, and I'm a local architect, and I just can't tell you how I'm proud and excited I am to be in this room at this time, to have this community, this community, and the council, you know, really moving in a positive way. And as we've heard today, we really can do this, this is doable, and it makes so much sense for us to do this. It's a way that we have an opportunity to really become a leader and to a way shower in the development of these ideas, and almost imaginal cells to bring this about and to spread the word about this, and that we can make a difference, and that we are the people and now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add? Okay, I'm going to just quickly just say that I am so proud of this community with all these groups that have come together and the professionals that have come forward. You know, you and I can try to turn off the lights when we remember and all that sort of thing, and try to do the right thing, but to have all these groups really working and that we can all be part of that, it's really wonderful. We realized about a year and a half ago that the national attention was not toward the global warming issue, and so it became a real grassroots effort in this country, and mayors and cities all over the place have stepped up to the plate, and they're falling all over themselves trying to be number one and everything, and it's, I think that's really wonderful. And, you know, we're doing a good job, it's really great. We heard Senator Boxer last week, the mayor's met in Washington and heard Senator Boxer, because she's the head of the Senate's Environment Committee now. And she says this is a number-one issue, and she wants to tackle it, and she is so happy to be representing the state of California that has AB 32. And she mentioned Ed Masria, who's right there near her on the dais, and he also spoke. But dynamic, dynamic people that are working on this issue. And I don't know if you remember that hole in the ozone? That was a little thing, it's still there, but it seems to be getting, you know, smaller, which is good. We actually solved that problem by banning the fluorocarbons, I think, is what we did. And that's a really good thing. That's not to be mixed up with this. All I want to say is that if we can work on that one and do as well as we did on that, we certainly can work on this one, and to see everybody all together, it's really good. It's an imperative for our children and grandchildren, and we're doing it. It's really an imperative, nobody's mentioned this, for coastal communities, because that ocean, you know, you tried the ice cube in the glass routine, the ocean rises as things melt, and it's, you know, we just have to do this. So there's no question, but I think it's wonderful. I'm interested in sending it to committee, not to forestall it or anything. I'd like it back here within a month or whatever's reasonable, but I think this committee, this committee is working hard, and Brian Barnwell's the chair of it. But just to see what kind of incentives we can put into our planning process, and we're talking about some kind of green awards for different businesses, and there's always, you know, things that we can work on, but I think we need to bring that package back here, along with the resolution. Very supportive of your resolution, I'm just thrilled to be part of this community. You have no idea, some other mayors have a much harder time than I do, so I'm always grateful. As a little boy in class said to me once, "Aren't all the other mayors jealous of you?" And I said, "Yes, they are." So there. But anyway, shall we start with Mr. Barnwell, and we can go down here?
Well, I-
I don't usually go first, I apologize, I just kind of bumbled over with stuff.
You were a leader in this whole thing.
I know.
Well, like I said, when my colleagues are finished making their remarks, I'd like to make the motion, but there's a couple of things I just wanted to comment on. Our approach to this is not just that it's buildings. I mean, buildings are one thing that we locally can get a hold of, but it's a big problem, and that's one of the things that our Sustainability Committee is looking at. You know, every single action we take has to help reduce our footprint, our carbon emissions and everything. One that I'm keenly aware of, having been a real estate appraiser for so long, is the idea that in the construction of a building, the construction costs are a completely separate analysis from the ongoing maintenance costs. And so when you propose to someone that you want to help them build their house, and you start throwing on what might be some additional costs, now, some of you are saying you can get 20% more than Title 24 without hardly even, you don't have to go any further than, you know, Hayward's. But if you wanted to go to 40%, you might have some additional costs. What I would like to do, one of my goals in the Sustainability Committee, is to get some bankers into the room and say, "Look, your investment is being protected long range by looking at those ongoing costs, as well as just a simplistic view of what are the construction troughs and trying to keep them down." Ms. Feeney mentioned the excitement and the enthusiasm associated with putting it together. I have to tell you that- I have to tell you that my 47% of my world is dread. It's, the excitement and enthusiasm are very real, but I have a great feeling of dread, and that's what motivates me. I agree with all the speakers here who spoke of the legacy that they give to their children and their grandchildren, and the necessity of the swiftness with which we act. I'm very glad that we have also put together our NPO ordinance. Ironically, building smaller houses and building them better is a better thing to do. And the argument against that concept has almost evaporated as a result of these discussions about the need to reduce carbon emissions through building. So there is a confluence of historical events, and the time is now, as someone has mentioned, and I'm also very proud to be with this council. Mr. House has been involved in this stuff for a long, long time, Mr. Horton as well, and Ms. Snyder sits on the subcommittee, so I'm looking forward to really doing good things swiftly, very, very swiftly.
Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. It's a rare day when architects and builders and contractors ask municipal government to add to the code, isn't it? So we mark this day. What time is it? Here we go. But how thrilling this is, and I really appreciate, I mean, what a great, this is, when we talk about private-public partnerships and nonprofits and the business community coming together for big, complex issues, this is exactly the type of thing that we're looking for. And, you know, we have to figure out what the tune is. The tune is certainly not Kermit the Frog's tune. It is easy being green. We just have to do it ourselves and be a leader and tell, show the state and the rest of the country about how to make it happen. I sit on the League of Cities Environmental Quality Policy Subcommittee, and what that meets quarterly, and it reviews state legislation and to give recommendations to the League Board on how to take positions on certain bills, and also educate ourselves on certain issues. And at its last meeting, I and a number of people in the committee were astonished to hear some of the members from various cities across the state actually question whether climate change and global warming was really a fact, and this is on this committee. And so, you know, here we are, we know, we know what the facts are, but we really have to show how it can be done. And there's a concern about what happens if there are mandates, what happens when new rules come down, whether it's through state legislation or building code or whatnot. And I think part of our role is to show it doesn't matter because it's the right thing to do anyway, and this is something that needs to be a part of the fabric of what it is to be a city and to be a state. So I'm fully supportive of this. I do want to say, I know a number of you really wanted us just to vote on this resolution today and have it done. One of the reasons I really want the Sustainability Committee to look at it is so that it's not just a piece of paper we feel warm and fuzzy about, but it's something that means something, that is incorporated into the fabric of what the city is doing as part of its green team, as part of all of its efforts. And really, it comes out being a better, active, living product, as opposed to just stamping something. And, because I think we all agree with the concept here, but to bring it into what everything the city is doing. And I believe our Sustainability Committee report is coming to council within a month, six weeks, anyway. So it's not like this is going to be in many, many months. This is now. And to incorporate this as part of the work that's already happening, I think we'll make it a stronger document and a stronger statement. So, again, thank you again, and we, Mr. Barnwell and I started this morning with some Planning Commission members about housing policy steering. Since 10:00 this morning, we've been talking housing-related stuff, but this is the most exciting of it all. So you guys win the gold star today, or the green star. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Horton.
I want to strike a note of optimism and enthusiasm. I've had the honor and privilege of working in the community now for about 40 years, about half of it at UCSB and about half of it down here. And the first part, as most of you will remember in this room, judging by the color of your hair, was one that dealt with social changes in the country as a whole, and there was a lot of sweeping changes that went on. And our campus here in our city indeed were leaders in that. And it's not perfect, and there's still a long ways to go in that, but there have been significant changes, just judging by who's running for president right now. And so I think that there's something unique and special and cutting-edge about our ability to work with each other. Indeed, as Helene just said, you have builders and architects in the same room, but you also have council members sitting here in the same room, and we're all on the same page on this stuff. And it has to do with shared values and the fact that we're concerned about the community that we live in, and most of us do a lot of studying on this, and we try to know what we're talking about, and that's a great honor, and I share with Marty the privilege it is for me to serve on this council and to be involved in things like this. And I really believe that in the next few months, that we'll be able to come to a resolution that will be, will put us out in front of everybody in the country.
Okay, Mr. House.
There was a, there was a report, and one of the things that came before the City Council a while ago, where the reporters said I gushed about something. This is worth gushing about. This really is good. And I, first of all, I want to appreciate on the council, Brian Barnwell for his leadership in really initiating some of the conversations that we've been having more and more recently. And I just really do appreciate his leadership in that area. And the mayor, certainly in her national presence with other mayors, and their ability to really command national attention to issues like this and to bring it home as well. It's not just seminars she goes to, she brings these things home. The committee that we have, my other colleagues here in the council, some of whom are not here today, but share these values, and our staff for totally getting it, and very much appreciate that. Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Casey, the rest of you, thank you very much. And to the Community Environmental Council, thank you so much for convening this amazing group of folks and bringing this community together in this kind of venue. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis, and for all of you and your team. We are all challenged by using our infrastructure, the land, and our resources the most efficiently as we possibly can. And this is truly in that tradition. And that's something that we've embodied in our charter, this is something that's part of our goal, if you will, as a community. So I know Mr. Barnwell's going to make the motion, but one of the things I was thinking about was that, what, actually, it was two things. One of them is that what Ms. Snyder said a moment ago, and she said that we all agree in concept. I don't think that should be left out of the motion. We've got specific things that we really are going to have to do to get this to be something that we can approve as a city council, but the concept of it, the direction of it, is something I feel unanimity behind. There were a couple of comments that were made, though, from the speakers that I want to just call attention to. Mr. Campanelli talked about, "What will the average person do?", you know, just like the normal guy. And I'm thinking of little contractors, and I'm thinking of little Joes out there, and ultimately, the handyman and all the rest of that, you know? Mr. Hopkins talked about low-income projects and how this is entirely feasible, and it fits right into that nicely, because there are cost savings and the longevity and all the rest of it. And then Ms. Feeney said that there are colleagues of yours who are still not learning these skills. So to me, that points out a challenge as well, and that challenge is an educational one, an inclusion one. It's when it reaches down the economic ladder and makes it certain that these things are not just for the finest projects, but for the everyday projects, the normal, everyday person, you know, from their porch to the water heater to the rest of those things. So I think that's a big part of the challenge as well. You all truly have it, and let's make sure the rest of the community gets it as well. So those are my comments, and maybe Mr. Barnwell has a good motion for us to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Barnwell.
I'm going to take my cue from the good work of all these people in this audience. The motion is that the City Council, all here jointly agrees and resolves that we accept the challenge of the Architecture 2030 for building performance, and that we direct our staff to develop an implementation plan for future council consideration. Said plan to include adopting LEED Silver Certification for new city buildings and major retrofits, to train the staff on LEEDs, amending the city implementation of Title 24 energy standards to ensure all buildings achieve 20% improvements over Title 24, incorporating the goal of achieving carbon neutrality for all buildings in the general plan, working with the Architecture 2030 Coalition on a community outreach, and also that we begin within 10 days on Channel 18, the viewing of the Masarya lecture, so that the public can see it and become believers as we have become.
And would you provide that, too, Susan? She's writing like crazy here.
You want me to say it again?
No. After the meeting, you can.
Second, anyway. I will.
And there's a second. Okay. And did you want your subcommittee to come back?
Well, let's talk about the timing. This is outside of the motion, okay? Maybe right now. But you had said a month. This is something I need to say to everybody in the audience, too. You all know this because you're all in the professional world, but we have staffing issues here, and we're going through our general plan update, and we just had a meeting that Ms. Snyder referenced, which is updating of the Inclusionary Ordinance. And maybe I'm prejudiced here, but all this really important stuff is happening in the Planning Department. And they do a really good job, but there are some staffing issues. So my own take on it is that this is pretty high priority. I would like to push this as quickly as we can to the front, so I would ask the general question. Can we get this to the Sustainability Committee within a month? And maybe within a couple, three weeks, and get it back to the council and talk about what it is we need to do? I know staff needs to analyze what it means to increase the building code Title 24 by 20%. I don't think anybody really knows that. So give me a time there, Mr. Casey or Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson, by the way, is a staff person for the Sustainability Committee, and she's doing a bang-up job.
Yeah. Ms. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, really, the Architecture 2030 Challenge complements well what staff is working on now. It's part of our sustainability program. Staff has been starting to work on a green building policy, just for existing, our existing facilities. So really, that type of timeframe will work well for staff, and we'll have some time to analyze the challenge.
Okay, that timeframe being that we can have it to the Sustainability Committee within how much, when can we, when can the Sustainability Committee talk about this?
We can schedule the first Sustainability Committee within the next couple of weeks to initiate that discussion.
Okay. All right, let's do that. And then Mr. Armstrong clicked on here.
No, I think what you've asked us to do is not difficult. I think the most difficult part of this is the implementation plan on the development of the Title 24 standards.
Right.
And I think we can come up with the plan. It's generally, we've got, there's some legal issues and technical issues about how do you actually implement it, but in terms of coming up with the plan, I think we can, and I would expect that the latest, we'd be back to the council within 60 days.
Okay. For our vote to implement these changes in our code?
Well, with the adoption of the implementation plan, but I think, and Paul, you can correct me, I think it's probably going to take longer to actually bring you code revisions-
Oh, sure.
-for Title 24.
Okay.
But that's, you have to work with the state, too, don't you, on that? Yeah.
There you go, Madam Mayor. That's, that's not part of the motion, but that's the timeframe that we're looking forward to.
Okay. Mr. Horton has a question.
Mr. Armstrong, there's nobody here from Finance Department that I see, and I want to make sure they get a chance at this, so I want you to be sure to bill that time, and that's not a problem.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to support this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ooh, it's good. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Davis.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. We would love to work with you. Thank you so much. We of the Coalition really look forward to working with you, and I know we're all working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're all on the same team here. Thanks a lot. Okay, item number 14, grant to Housing Authority for Security Deposit Loan Program. Okay. Just going to take a brief second while everybody gets seated. They just want us to fix the planet, that's all it is. You know, but it's going to- Every state is on board, except Wyoming. I don't know why. Now, what else do you want us to do? Item number 14, you read it, yeah. Okay, Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We did want to first reiterate to you that we think the Housing Steering Committee process is extremely important, too, so a plug for that.
It is.
And we think you got a fairly thorough staff report on this. This is the recommendation that you approve a $100,000 grant from our home funds to the Housing Authority to do a security deposit loan and grant program and a homeless prevention loan and grant program. You have a fairly thorough staff report. The hour is fairly late. The Finance Committee reviewed it this afternoon and supported it and recommend, would be recommending it to you. So you can tell me to stop with the full presentation if you'd like. I can go over it all, but if, as an alternative, if you prefer, Rob is here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I think Mr. Horton might want to say something on this.
Well, I'm going to move the recommendation that we approve a grant of $100,000. I can assure the rest of council that we took quite a while asking questions in Finance Committee today. The money is clearly available. In fact, if we don't use the money, we may lose the money. In terms of a way to solve housing problems in the city, it's hard to think of a better way than this one. An issue that some of us were a little bit worried about was that these funds may go to people who have, who will have some difficulty repaying it, and perhaps, Mr. Pearson is here, and he could speak just a second to how you intend to develop a schedule for repayment and work with it. Could you tell the council that?
Yeah, Mr. Pearson.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilman Horton, members of council, I just want to say that so far, our experience since we ratcheted up the program last June, the commission approved direct loans to folks. We are still doing it on a loan basis, and loan repayments are averaging $25 to $75 per month. And the grants that we've given have been just a handful to prevent homelessness, and just since June, we've issued about $40,000 in loans, and repayments are averaging during that time about $11,000. So this will continue to replenish, and we feel that teaching the responsibility on repayments where they can do it is the right way to go, and we're making it affordable to the client in terms of repayments.
The Family Self-Sufficiency Program, that's part, that's what this is?
It's perhaps an extension of that, in some ways. We think that people on fixed incomes, we are obviously a little more careful with, but when a family has the ability to earn more income, and they should earn more income, we're encouraging them that, and to honor responsibilities in terms of loan repayments is the good thing to do for everybody.
That's right. And teaching them how to handle their money, it's really, really an amazing program. Okay, any discussion? Oh, Mr. House, I'm sorry.
And I do support the motion, but I just want to say out loud, this is going to provide 70 loans, around 70 loans, of the smaller variety, and it will, if I understand then, become a recirculating fund that is used over and over and over again.
That's correct.
So it can, it will then benefit literally hundreds and hundreds of individuals and families in getting out of their dire circumstances into secure housing.
That is correct. And if we find that it gets more utilization than we suspect, we've talked to city staff about coming back for additional home funding for the program.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second, and no speaker slips, should say that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I probably should have put you on first, so we owe you one. Okay, thank you. And I believe that's the end down to our adjournment. I want to make sure that we adjourn in honor of those. It's been a year now since the postal, in Galena, the postal slayings, and it's very hard for, I know the employees out there, and employees of the postal service, and they're holding memorial services this afternoon, but it's, our hearts go out to them, and we adjourn this meeting in the honor of the employees and also their families. So thank you very much. See you next week. and also their families. So thank you very much. See you next week.